Hello and welcome to this edition of the Potomac Local Podcast. I'm your host, publisher of Potomac Local News, Uriah Kaiser. Joining us on the podcast today is Barton Randall. He is the candidate for the Garrisonville District Supervisor seat. Mr. Randall is no stranger to Stafford County. He's lived in the county for years and currently serves on the county's Planning Commission. Mr. Randall, thanks for joining us on the podcast today.
Well, thanks for having me. I'm looking forward to talking to you and talking to your listeners about the things that I'm excited about in Stafford County.
So, one of the things that you have been wrangling with for months is a major project on the Planning Commission and one that has gotten a lot of attention from a lot of residents in North Stafford, both in the Garrisonville and the Rock Hill districts, is the proposed expansion of the Rock Hill Quarry. I know last night you met on this. This was the last meeting the Planning Commission had to make a decision on whether or not to allow the quarry to expand its footprint. The quarry obviously is located is just north of 610, right off 610, if you will, very populated area. The quarry abuts to two neighborhoods and is not far as a stone's throw from many other neighborhoods as well. And so, noise has been an issue, vibration has been a complaint. And on top of this, we're looking at the quarry owners of Vulcan Quarry wants to not only expand its footprint there and start mining for more minerals, but it also has in 2010, it was allowed to relocate a concrete plant there. And as part of it's what it's proposing to do now is wanting to expand the hours of operation. And so, there's a lot, it's a very, I won't say cumbersome, I'm sure it may be cumbersome for those of you who are dealing with this. But it's a big issue and it's got a lot of attention. What happened? Would you guys tell me about what the actions you guys took last night on the Planning Commission?
Well, thank you for bringing that up. That is exactly a concern we have had. We, this was brought to us in May for the first part of the public hearing. It is a complicated process. There have been, they have been operating in Vulcan for about 40 years now. There have been several proffer amendments that have been made over that last, over the course of 40 years through three or four different processes to acquire land. And so, one of the benefits of this process was they were going to bring all of the proffers, all of the conditions under one umbrella, rather than dealing with three or four different umbrellas, we were going to bring them all under one. They wanted to expand their, their operations in the southern, to the southern direction closer to the residents. And then they wanted to relocate the concrete plant that's currently over by the courthouse. And so, the timeline for that, that the Board of Supervisors gave us to deal with this ends August 20th. And with the Board of, with the Planning Commission's summer schedule, we had our meeting last night and our next meeting would not be until August 25th. And so, we needed to adjudicate the matter last night, or we needed to go back to the board with the applicant's permission, go back to the board for additional time. And so, the decision was made that we wanted to try to adjudicate it last night. We were there, started at six o'clock. We had other, other business, obviously, but we were taking care of the Vulcan. A decision well into the wee hours of the morning. I think we left at about one o'clock in the morning last night.
Not a typical meeting for the Planning Commission running from 6:00 PM to 1:00 AM. That's not normal.
No, that's not normal. So, we, we went through the entire proffer process, went through the entire condition process. We made sure that those conditions were as beneficial to the county as possible. And everybody is aware that the Planning Commission does not approve or deny the, it simply recommends action to the Board of Supervisors.
And that's correct. And one of the things that, that's important to note here is that you with the Planning Commission, you, the Planning Commission receives land use cases that are sent to it from people, from applicants, as they're called, landowners who want to do a rezoning or expand their property, what have you. And then your job on the Planning Commission to essentially review their proposal and make sure that it fits within the current zoning laws in the county. And then make a recommendation to the Board of County Supervisors, which will actually approve or deny that proposal. One of the things, some of the things that you were talking about last night at your meeting was, you know, very, very detailed, right? Some of them were making sure that when trucks, when they privately own trucks come in the quarry and they exit the quarry, their loads are tied down. There's nothing, there's no stone falling off of the back of the truck. You know, there was talk about vegetation, plants, trees, is it going to be planted around the perimeter of the quarry? Will it be planted on the berms that they're proposing to put up to sort of lessen the, not only the sound of blasting that goes on there, but also the vibration that goes on there. There was a lot of wrangling last night about how much the county can actually, turns out the county doesn't have any say over how much vibration can, that Vulcan can actually do when it's blasting. Apparently that we learned is now regulated by the state per state code. So, in the end, lots was discussed last night. What was the Planning Commission's recommendation to the Board of Supervisors?
The, with one person absent, the decision of the Board, the decision at the Planning Commission was to deny the applicant by a four to two vote. And again, our, our job was to make a decision to recommend or deny, but was also to put together the best package that we thought was beneficial to the county, to the Board of Supervisors. We don't know what the Board of Supervisors is going to do. They will vote on the package that we put together with Vulcan's help. They made a lot of concessions to us. And that final package is what's going to go to the Board of Supervisors. If we had adjudicated this in May and simply said yes or no in May, the package that would have gone to the board would have been substantially less, less detailed, it would have been less, what I think was a good thing for the county. And so.
And I do want to point out some of the concessions that were made last night from Vulcan. They, they wanted to do nighttime hours. They curbed those. They wanted to operate something in the neighborhood of 140 nights a year. They cut that down to 62 calendar days per year. Part of this debate was actually the water needs of Stafford County. We have two, we have, we have a pit over there that's been blasted and drilled. And the plan was to close that pit in and around 2035. And if need be, fill that pit with water, for drinking water for the residents of Stafford County. And, and so, there was some debate over whether or not they would close that pit, you know, early. Cause part of the, I guess, part of the, what their ask was to not have, not to have to close the pit in, at 2035, to keep it open longer. And in one proposal, much longer. But, but there was also a, I guess they came back and said, if you need this pit by 2040, give us five years notification. And 2045, we'll have it ready for you to fill it with water. And so, those were, so those were some of the, I guess, agreeances by Vulcan who wanted to come back and work with the county. So, now on to the Board of Supervisors. Do we know when the board might take up this case?
I do not. My understanding is that they are trying to, obviously with the turnover that will be happening at the Board of Supervisors in November and December timeframe, that they're going to try to, they're trying to clear their docket as much as possible. I would expect that it would happen maybe in September. But I, I'm not sure. I don't have, I'm not pervy to that scheduling of the board.
And I do want to get to the turnover in the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Supervisors in general, because of course you are running for the Board of Supervisors and we want to talk to you about that. We will, we will see a markedly different board next year when they are seated on January 1st. Before we get there, I do want to take a moment to talk to our, our audience, whether you're listening to us on the Potomac Local Podcast, you're watching us on video on your iPhone, your cell, your Android phone, your laptop, wherever you get us on video. We want to ask you to please support our work here at PotomacLocalNews.com. We love reporting about our community. We love bringing you the news that nobody else is writing about and telling you about. We've lived here, I've lived here pretty much all my life. I started Potomac Local News 11 years ago to report on the community in which I grew up in it. I am now raising my family in. So, please, your support matters. Local news matters and having understanding of how, of how the news affects not only your community, but your child's school, the parks, the roads that you travel on every day, the community businesses and amenities that you enjoy, that make this place our community home. We, we cover that information. We bring you the news and your support means that we can just continue to bring you even more local coverage of the news that matters so much to you in this very important time in our history here in the US. Please go to PotomacLocalNews.com, click on Why Subscribe and then click Support Quality Local Journalism. And please subscribe today. It's only $65 for an annual pass. It gives you 100% access to our content, everything on the site. If you want a monthly pass as well, we do sell those for $6 a month. It's all online. We debit your card one time or monthly. We make it very easy, no fuss, no muss. And of course, you can cancel at any time. So, please. PotomacLocalNews.com, click on Why Subscribe and click on Support Quality Local Journalism. We're talking with Barton Randall, who is a candidate for the Stafford County Board of Supervisors. There, you know, Stafford County, growing county, where we're now surpassed the 150,000 mark in terms of population. I think we're about 153,000 people who now live in Stafford County. And you're coming in at a time of great change. Sort of the pandemic is waning. Things are getting back to normal. And we are now looking at developing once again Stafford County. And so, one of the most recent actions the board took was to approve a master plan for its downtown Stafford development. And it's 23 acres of county-owned land and then an adjacent parcel, about seven acres of land. We are going to build more than 300 new apartments on just that seven acre piece of land. And the 23 other acres will be also developed in some way, shape or form, hopefully creating what county leaders say is a walkable downtown area where people can live, work and play, similar to what we've seen in our neighbors to the north in Potomac County Center, Woodbridge or Reston or Loudoun County. The, what do you think about this type of development? It's a first for Stafford County. We've not seen this before. And obviously, you weren't on the board when this was decided, but you will be and you will have other land use cases that you will have to decide. What, what do you think about this new urbanized development that's coming for Stafford County?
Well, one of the things we talk about on the campaign trail and I talk to people about is making Stafford County a destination county, that we no longer need to be, we're, we're, we're large, as you just mentioned, and we're getting larger. We're having people come to us. We're, we're not going to be able, as I tell people, I can't put a stop sign at 140, 143 and say, yeah, just keep moving. We don't want you here. That's obviously not something we can do. So, they're coming, they're going to come to Stafford the same reason I came to Stafford, the same reason there are people moving to Stafford now. And so, what we need to do is we need to develop a process to make Stafford a destination county. And one of the things that I think would be beneficial to a destination county is a vibrant downtown. Right? We desperately need that. That's going to be a linchpin of making Stafford County a destination county. And we have a unique opportunity with the 24, 23 to 25 acre, I don't remember exactly what it is, of the county land owned by the county to really do this right and to really make sure that what we want happens. Yes, we have an MOU with JPI. They said, instead of us building five single-story businesses that may not fit into our downtown picture, if you'll give us 300 apartments, here's what we will do to help you build that downtown and help you build a courthouse and those types of things.
And so, JPI being the owner of the six to seven acres of property that was rezoned for the new UD5 zoning classification, the most urban zoning ever in Stafford County. That's where those 300 apartments to go. So, JPI owns that and they sort of have, as you mentioned, a memorandum of understanding about what type of housing that they will build that will fit the county's vision for its downtown.
Yes, and they'll put, there'll be retail underneath on the, on the bottom floor. There'll be apartments at the top. There'll be a pool. There'll be a dog park. There'll be a fountain park. All things that fit into much better to the downtown picture that, that the county has versus five one-story strip malls, strip malls with businesses that may or may not be full.
So, if you, if you win the, the, the race and you are running against Pamela Young, who is a member of the Stafford County School Boards, she's an elected member of the Stafford County School Board, so we'll say that who is your candidate. But if you were to win this race, you will also inherit a, a development project that has yet failed to launch. And that is the Garrison, North Stafford. It's right there off of 610. If you're familiar with Stafford Wings, the old Wings to Go is now Stafford Wings. You can probably tell I've, I've been there once or twice. That is an, that's an area that it was, is too still supposed to have mixed-use development. We're talking homes, street-level retail, a new movie theater, Regal Theater. This project, we began reporting on it back in 2015, 2016, and still today, we have not seen any shovels in the ground. And this leaves a lot of Stafford residents wondering, well, we've heard so much about this project. We've heard so much about the nearby Acquiat Town Center, which we did see some new apartments go up there. But we, and there are some offices there, but what was promised about a new grocery store and more commercial development, we never saw that develop. So, there is some skepticism on, on Stafford's development. And so, again, if you win, you'll inherit the Garrison. What do you tell people who say, can we just get one thing done before we move on to the next?
Well, and I talk to people about, believe it or not, I get this question a lot as I talk to people as well. And one of the things that we, we discuss with them is that the Acquiat Town Center was given the opportunity, the people on the board at that point in time, gave the developer an opportunity to build the residential before any of the commercial was built. And then, once the residential was built, we never got the commercial. All right. They got their, they got their profit margin. They got what was most profitable to them, the apartments. And then they walked away from the, from the commercial. I don't know exactly how that happened with the board, but that was obviously done under that, you know, 2020, 2008, 2009, 2010, sometime in that, in that timeframe. The Garrison is done a lot differently. No, it's not started yet. I totally agree. And they're, and they're, in my opinion, they're, they're late. We need to get this going. But one of the things that we've done with the Garrison is we, the board, recognizing the, the issues in the past, identified that we need to put some commercial in place before you get residential. So, there's, and don't, I don't know exact, I think it's like 200,000 square feet of commercial will be built before we get one occupancy permit for a residential. And then you get like 150 occupancy, occupancy permits. And then you have to build the rest of the, the rest of the commercial before you get the rest of your occupancy permits. So, this is a phased approach that requires commercial to be built before you get all of the residential. So, this is a completely different attempt by the board to ensure that we have some commercial before we get to the residential. So, we don't end up like the Acquiat Town Center.
You know, and I will say this, and watching you last night during the, the Planning Commission meeting, you had another case before you that was not related to the quarry. It was actually another development case. I believe it was off Moreton Road Route 17 in South Stafford. And, and it called for more of this type of development, more apartments and more street-level retail, more commercial. And, and essentially you were, you were giving the applicant, the guy that was pitching the project, you, you were giving the business begin, and you told him, listen, and, and, and I'll quote you, you said, I hear this from people all the time, that we will market this development and we will work very hard to get commercial space in here, get the tenants into the commercial spaces. So, it's not just homes. It's not just more traffic, right? Adding to the, to the roads. There are some additional mixed use as these projects are always sold. And so, will you hold developers' feet to the fire when it comes to getting mixed uses as they promise? And, and do you think that's what's happened here with the Garrison? Because they simply, they may not have been able to get that mixed-use commercial in there first, which is what's, what's proffered, but they have to have that commercial before they build the homes. We all know if you build homes, they, they tend to fill up pretty quickly, whether you build apartments or single-family homes, townhomes, two-over-twos. Doesn't really matter. In this area, they fill up. It's the commercial that sort of can be and it may be. Do you think in this case, in the Garrison's case, it's that white whale getting the commercial in there first?
I think that that has been an issue to that extent, obviously. And again, I've had some conversations with them, with the owners. And they have said that obviously during the pandemic, a lot of, of those retail stores backed away from, backed away from expansion. And they were not able to get who they wanted right there at the front of the Garrison, right next to Garrisonville Road. But again, they won't build it unless they have a lease signed. And so, they are working actively to get those leases signed. Now, does this ensure that over the next 20 years, there's going to be somebody in there all the time? Of course. I don't know that. I don't think anybody can, can foresee the future as far as that's concerned. But they're making a great effort to get there and to get those leases. And where they are, that's, you know, that's their information and, and they have worked, they're working on it. That's all I can say. And I, I think that once they move that forward, I think this is going to be a great downtown, a great area for us.
You bring up the pandemic and I do want to switch gears on you here. Your, your opponent Pamela Young, she is the Democrat nominee for the Garrisonville District Board of Supervisor seat. You are obviously the Republican nominee for the seat. And I, I'm sorry, independent. I'm sorry. You're, you're running as an independent.
That's correct. I have been endorsed, but I am running as an independent in this case.
And that's because of your federal employment status. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, I stand corrected. Thank you for correcting the record. You were running as an independent endorsed by the Republicans. You know, your opponent on the school board just two nights ago voiced her, her support for masking students, masking all students who return in, in about two and a half weeks now, as we count down to the start of the 2021, 22 school year. And, and she made some statements, even questioning whether or not children should be allowed to talk in a cafeteria if they are back in the school building. Of course, this will be the first time that children will be allowed back in school buildings five days a week, 100% since the start of the pandemic in March of 2020. You are not running for a school board seat. However, the Board of Supervisors does provide funding for the school board. You are the majority funder of the school division in the county, the Board of Supervisors, county government. But as a, as a parent, do you think that, that, that your children should have to, anyone's children should have to be forced to wear a mask when it goes, when we go back to school in just two and a half weeks?
You know, that's a great question. This country, our lives are based on their freedom of choice. To be, we'll say it's under freedom of choice because you have to live with the consequences of that choice. But we, we, we believe in free agency. We believe in the opportunity to make decisions on our own without being dictated to. If, if we decide that it's important that we as a parents decide that it's important we wear masks, then by all means, wear a mask. But I don't believe in this situation, being that we've had so many vaccinations that the adults have all been vaccinated for the most part, that the science shows we have so few children that are affected. And if you're concerned, wear a mask. If you're, if, if you want that choice and the kids, we've shown studies out there that said the kids have been negatively and the most part affected by masks and the social issues that come from masks, then we should have as parents the right to be able to decide one way or the other.
Now, it's fair to, it's fair to say that the coronavirus cases, new coronavirus cases in Stafford County, we've seen more than 100 of them in the, over the course of the past seven days, today being July 29th, 2021. But it's also fair to say, as I look here at the numbers from the Virginia Department of Health, that 53, about 54% of Stafford's population is estimated to be fully vaccinated. So, as, as a leader who makes policy, as a would-be leader on, who would make policy in Stafford County, when, what's the magic number in terms of vaccination percentage that we should be able to say, okay, well, we're good enough. We can, we can learn to live with the, with the coronavirus, which apparently isn't going anywhere.
No, no, it's not. It's going to be here. You know, we have to make every, we have to make every effort to provide everyone who wants a vaccine, the opportunity to get a vaccine. I don't know if there is a magic number. They, we live in a world of immunity. We live in a world of herd immunity that we do, we live our lives, we build our immune systems and the immune systems keep us and prevent us. You know, why does one in a family get sick and why does another not get sick? You know, we work, that's part of our life. And so, I want to make sure that the vaccine is available to everyone, that those who are, those who are compromised have every opportunity to get vaccinated. But then in the end, you have to make a decision for yourself and you have to live your life as you see fit. You know, one of the things, if I could for a second, you know, I, I spent some time in Japan doing some work for my church. And it was, it was interesting back then, even so far back as I, I'm going to date myself, that early eighties, where those in Japan had no inclination, no issues with wearing a mask out in public, none. They, if they didn't, if they felt bad or they didn't want to be sick to some, they wore a mask. It was not uncommon to see people wearing a mask in the 1980s in Japan. Did you think, what was the stigma in America in 1980 to wear a mask outside? Nobody, nobody. We just said, oh, yeah, I got a cough. Okay, I'm just going to go to work anyway. Yeah, I feel a little down. I'm just going to go anywhere. Well, the benefit I think of this virus has been that the stigma of wearing a mask in public has been completely, not completely, I should say, but has been minimized. That now when somebody wears a mask in public, you don't think twice. You say, oh, they're doing their due diligence and are trying to keep their germs from getting on someone else. Wow, what a great, what a great story. What a great act that they have to try to help people around them. But again, the bottom line is, is we have to be able to make the choices that we feel in our, we feel are best for us. Whether that's going to school, whether it's going to work, whether that's wearing a mask, whether that's not wearing a mask. It's important that we have that option.
So, so we'll get into your family here, because you, because you brought up your, your church. And I want to end our time here talking about you and your family personally. But to answer the question, if you, if you had a, and if you do, or if you had a child in, in public school, would you want them going back in a mask?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. Okay. Well, let's get then to your family here. How, just break it down for me. How long have you been a Stafford County resident? And tell me about your family. Are you, are you married? Do you have children?
Yes. I'm married, very happily married. My wife and I, in fact, it's funny you should say that. My wife and I are celebrating our 35th wedding anniversary next week.
Congratulations.
We are, after my, after my kickoff on Saturday, we are headed to Merle Beach for a week to celebrate that with my, with my dad's 83rd birthday. We have two children. I have a 32-year-old who just finished her doctorate from Virginia Tech. She's currently in Wilmington with my son-in-law and my six-year-old granddaughter. And so, you talk about going to school and wearing masks and, you know, she's, she's right there. And then my, my son is a, is a Prince William County Police Officer up in Prince William. And so, we have been very blessed. They are wonderful children and children. They're, they're, yeah. They're great adults doing great things and, and great servants and, and doing great work for the communities.
Absolutely, absolutely. And then, and then you personally, your, your work experience and your service in the military, please run down that for us.
Absolutely. I graduated from high school, went to college for a couple of years. I did a church service 18-month mission in Japan. And then I came home from there and joined the military in the nuclear power program in the, in the Navy. I spent 24-plus years, just under 25 years in the nuclear Navy, retired as a Master Chief in the Navy. We have, my last tour was here up at the Navy Annex, which is just south, was just south of the Pentagon. We moved here in 2006. And so, we've been in Stafford County for 15 years. And when I retired in 2009, we, we liked it here and we decided to stay here. And I currently am working as a federal employee for the Coast Guard, supporting the National Security Cutter Program as the Acquisition Manager.
And finally, I, you mentioned your campaign kickoff. I'll, I'll give you a plug because I'm sure it's, it's, it's one thing that, that you would enjoy people coming out to, to see you and. and and of course, if there's free food involved, you know, I'll tell you personally, reporters work for food. And so I'll let you give us the details on that event.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Saturday morning at eleven o'clock at Mission Barbecue on six ten, we will be having our campaign kickoff. They have agreed graciously and very much appreciative to provide a free sandwich voucher for all attendees at the kickoff. We will also have some items for a silent auction. But for the most part, it's to meet the meet me for me to meet the residents to get some conversation and to get some meet and greet time together, but to 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 start this campaign off, we mean, we've been campaigning campaigning. But this is really our our kickoff to the and push to the end to really make Stafford County what we want it to be and to really move it forward in the vision that I have for Stafford.
So it's Voting Day, Election Day is November second this year, but in in this new world, this post pandemic COVID world that we live in, Election Day seems to go on for weeks now because early voting starts September eighteenth, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
That is correct. September eighteenth, and I believe it's at the airport and at the county offices.
So that is quickly approaching, like it's it's amazing to think. It just feels like we were just going through the twenty twenty election, and and now we have another election week period, a marathon going on yet again. Barton Randall, Barton Randall is the candidate for the Garrisonville District seats for the Board of Stafford Board of Supervisors. We certainly appreciate your time today. Thank you for joining us today on the Potomac Local Podcast, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you. Take care.